Go ahead and discuss with us the possibility of a small business program, what that might look like and how NACO might assist. And so let Dagny and then we can take up the rest of the CARE Act funding once we get to my agenda item.
So should we just leave this as a discussion item and open this back up under you, or can we go ahead and open this item right now?
This is open right now.
All right, we're going to open on page four, item B, 1B. It's discussion for possible action. A direction on utilization of the CARES Act funds distributed to White Pine County in a amount of $1,022,301. Dagny, are you on the phone?
I am, Mr. Chair. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So Elizabeth said, NACO has been working on supporting county in providing information as well as ideas for spending the CARES Fund or TruLe funds. So obviously, it's brief. One of the things that you and I and NACO just created got this document outlining sort of all rules for those funds as well as a list of all the things that we believe you could use the funds for. So one of those things was to share the funds with businesses in your community to help them through the pandemic and the impact from that. So you are allowed to give grants to businesses for expenses that they have incurred due to COVID-19. And so what we did is based on models that other counties have created throughout the United States as well as a program that our county set up, we are looking at creating a program to do the grant, do the application creation as well as processing for a business grant program that all the counties counties that want to reach a plug into so that you wouldn't have to do that processing or screening or all of that. Our county received a direct allocation of the CARES Fund over a month ago. So they have already set up a program like this. So we use that as sort of a model. And what they did is they partnered with an outside contractor, a donation called the National Development Council. That's a nonprofit that's been around for 50 years, works with local entities and jurisdictions on economic development. And they partnered with them to basically assist them in developing the application for the businesses as well as all the screening and as well as doing all the backend processing of the application. And so based on that, NACO is looking into a similar model where we would engage with a contractor and they would help us create the application and the process and that they would then screen and go through all those applications for us. And this is to ensure, of course, that the application itself and the process comply with all the requirements of the CARE Act. But also so that county, every county, if they do want to share their dollars with businesses, doesn't have to reinvent the wheel and put staff on creating and reviewing applications. So we wanted to create something that counties could just, like I said, apply to. So we have had a couple calls on this. We are trying to get a sense of which counties may be interested in a program like this so that we can get an idea of sort of the magnitude. And we are getting a bid from the National Development Council as well as at least one other contractor to get an idea of what that would cost. And so what we're sort of looking for from counties is assess whether you would be interested in so what would be the dollar amount or ballpark dollar amount that you would want to spend on this. So the types of allow, we use this just as an example, that businesses could receive dollars for from from your county. Our working capital for things like rent, utilities, inventory, payroll, et cetera. Retrofiting businesses, so when they've got to make changes in order to accommodate the public with social distancing, physical changes, you know, large or small, those could be funded with these dollars. As well as PPE, cleaning equipment, things like that. So what this program would look like from NACO is we would contract with the contractor to develop the application and processing. And then if White Pine County was interested, you would indicate that and we would have a portal and we would work with you on, you know, rollout and everything and advertising of the program. And then your applications would just come through us. And then the contractor would report back to you the businesses that were approved and you would make final approval as a distributor of funds to them. So the cost to NACO would be very the cost to the contractor. The cost to NACO would be for the contractor was what? Contractor as well as potentially the portal. We also hope, of course, that NACO entering into a contract like this would create an economy of scale and so would save our members' dollars. And so how it would work is we would then ask for an assessment from participating counties, so if White Pine County wanted to participate, we would ask for you to pay us the portion of that program associated with your usage. So whatever you're presenting to this, you know, broken out by all the, you know, compared to all the counties, you would then pay that to NACO. An important other thing to know is that you can use your CARES dollars to administer a program like this. That isn't allowed to use by any CARES bill. So that you are allowed to use your CARES dollars to pay NACO or other contractors to provide a sort of a signature. Again, we're still trying to get the contract figured out. This would have to go to approval through our NACO Executive Committee and more, but it's sort of chicken and egg thing. So we're trying to figure out what we need on this end and then also trying to gain interest from all other counties. One other thing we would recommend is that if this program gets up and going and if counties who want to participate, that you work regionally with your cities. Cities receive a substantial portion of dollars as well from the CARES Fund or TruLe fund. And instead of having a pension program where, you know, you're just doing unincorporated or maybe you're doing, you know, for city residents, our recommendation is that you work with your cities. If they want to participate, share their dollars with you so that you could technically be the sort of administrator of this with help from NACO and administer these grants for your entire county, including incorporated areas. That's something we're recommending overall, that counties work with cities to ensure that some of these dollars, you know, that cities that receive grants could be used to go towards regional services. But also to ensure that none of these dollars are left on the table. There is sort of a limited range of things you could spend these dollars on. And so we want to make sure that you can use that and help support you to do that right so that none of these dollars are returned to the state. Any dollars that you don't use do have to be returned to the state. So that's important to note. And then the final piece that I just, I want to fill everyone in on is that sort of based on the loss that Clark County did as well through the university system, they partnered with the Small Business Development Center that has an office at UNLV as well as UNR. And they provide assistance for small businesses. So that organization agreed to provide support to the businesses to fill out the grant. So we worked with the Small Business Development Center, UNR, and they also have agreed if we go forward to be a partner on this so that any business that would like to apply can go to the Small Business Development Center, the university, and get assistance, you know, get sort of support on every element of filling out that application, the paperwork they have to fill in, et cetera. And then last thing I'll add, just so I don't forget, it is important that any dollars that are shared with businesses and this would be part of the screening process, screening for the application process has to be connected to the impact of COVID. So that business would have to show, which, you know, we're not going to at this point, the impact from COVID on their business. So that's all I've got on that. I'd be happy to answer any questions or help with any questions. Then you all have permission to continue.
Because of where we're at in White Pine County, what most of, almost all of our businesses are within the city limits. And we, the city's got 740,000, I believe, we got a million 20. If we go into these businesses, it's certainly they're part of the White Pine County. That's the percentage part, that's where I'd be confused is if we get together and we work with the city and we go this route, how would that? Would we match up percentage wise, based on the amount of businesses we have in the unincorporated area as opposed to the incorporated city? How would that, I mean, just direction really is what I'm asking.
Right. That's a great question. It would be up to you. I mean, that would maybe be a good way to do it is by percentage, if the city did not want to partner with you on this. Of course, you could share businesses with, you could share the dollars with all the businesses in the unincorporated and incorporated. So you could make a grant program and have it serve all the residents in the county, city included. Or if the county is willing to partner and share some of their CARES dollars with you. I know they received a lot of money and are going to need to spend that and this is a good way to do that. So if they're willing to partner with you on this, right, what would be that sort of formula to determine what they contribute? One of the things we did is send out from GoEd, and I think Elizabeth passed this, if not, I can send it, is a by-county breakdown of the businesses as well as the number of employees that each has. So that can give you sort of an idea of, you know, how many dollars you want to put to that. And then once you get an idea, you know, to talk about the percentage of businesses in the city and county and ask the city to, you know, contribute that proportion. But it's really totally up to you and what you and the city would be comfortable with in terms of working that out. And again, you, you know, we would recommend to do that to make sure all the funds get sent, but you could just do, just county to each of all businesses. It's up to you.
Elizabeth has the podium, so would you like to speak, Elizabeth?
Yes, if I may. So this is one of the things you can spend CARES Act funding on. I have not approached the city yet, but I think it would be a good idea. One of the things that I like about this idea is working with NACO on this is it takes us out of looking at people's individual businesses and it puts it into the hands of a third party. So we're not like a nosy big brother looking over your shoulder at your books or your needs or whatever. It's, and then we ensure compliance with CARES Act. Because CARES Act is very specific in what we can use these funds for. And we have to follow up and make sure that that's how the funds are used. So this is, I think partnering with a third, through NACO with a third party is the way to make our businesses feel more comfortable in engaging with this type of a program. And yes, most of the businesses are within city limits. And I would like to go ahead and talk to Mayor Roberts about potentially working on this together because I believe this is an important program that CARES Act provides for. And so I just, I think this is a good way to go because I really don't think we as county employees want to be in the role of evaluating small business activity as it relates to these programs.
Anyone else got any questions of Dagny or Elizabeth on this? And seeing, Brian?
I do.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Brian.
Okay, yeah. So this is Brian Powell from the DA's office. And you may not have a sort of an answer for me on this, but obviously, we understand the concept that, you know, if you had to put up Plexiglas or, you know, buy PPE for your employees, that's going to be covered. Has there been any discussion with regard to these funds about, you know, training folks in industries that are lacking as long as it can be tied to COVID? You know, like if we had a contractor in town that said, you know, boy, I was struggling enough as it was, but I couldn't get anybody out here to work for me, particularly during this six months or three months or hopefully, hopefully not nine months or something. But anyway, has there been any discussion about sort of using the money for training for certain industries where we may be lacking, particularly here in White Pine County, such as construction?
I think that's my answer. Go ahead.
I can answer. Thank you. This one can be used for workforce training. That is a new citizen test in the Treasury guidance. And I believe that's something to have to reinforce this, you know, with the DA's office and Elizabeth. It's not a long document to review that Treasury guidance. But that said, yes, you can use those dollars for workforce. I think the most important thing for both a program like that and any of their uses is you have to be able to tie it directly back to the impacts of COVID. So it's, you know, for any business, if they can say that, you know, that they lost staff and now we're not able to staff back up because of the impact of COVID and, you know, there needs to be training for that staff, you can use it for that score. If there's a lot of folks that are out of work and that can be tied directly to the impact of businesses closing because of COVID, then of course, you know, that also would be an allowed to use developing a workforce program for those folks. Does that answer your question?
It does. That was very helpful. Thank you.
Jane, you had some.
I just wanted to comment, I had a discussion yesterday with Carolyn McIntosh and through association with this, the Small Business Development Agency. And the city, it was my understanding through that has the intent to work on such a program already. And she was just calling to encourage the county to do so. So I don't, I don't think that would be a stretch at all. I think that the city would be ready to come on board from what I understand. I haven't gotten that direct from the city, but I think we could partner together and put together a really usable program because there is some businesses that desperately need this.
And I think that Elizabeth and I had had a brief conversation after I had a conversation with the mayor in regards to, you know, would we be interested in doing something like that? And both of us, both entities are still finding out exactly how it's going to work. And I think that NACO, this is a great opportunity. It'd really be a great help. And thank you, Dagny, for your organization to step up to the plate and help the counties to move forward with this.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
What did I write? Have I added something?
Yes, go ahead. Please do.
Two things. I just wanted to address what Elizabeth said earlier about if you were to use a program like this and counties have to be evaluating businesses. That also would remove, I know in small communities, this is something we've heard from others, the perception that there might be conflict of interest where, you know, lots of folks, you know, you might have family members or you often know each other. So then you've got an outside contractor doing that evaluation for you so that there can't be any perception of, you know, conflict of interest. So the second thing I just wanted to add is that we are trying to move fast on this because I know counties are trying to figure out how to spend these dollars. And businesses are in need now, yesterday, right? And so we are doing a call next Wednesday, the 15th. I believe it's at 11:00 AM, Elizabeth. And I think Commissioner Carson are on my, and I believe the district attorney as well are on my distribution list for this. So we'll send out some information for that. But for big counties that are interested, we're asking them to call in. But we're going to talk through sort of some of the in-the-week details on what these grants might look like, you know, what are some of the, you know, types of, you know, what are some of the maybe grant amounts and uses for the dollars for businesses that we want to look at? In Nevada, you know, counties sort of, all counties or counties that want to participate application. So if you do decide that you're interested, we would ask you to please join that call on Wednesday. And then, Mr. Chair, I can add one more thing. I apologize. I just want to put a plug in for developing a plan on how to use these funds as soon as you're able. So not only if you decide to do a business grant program, but also all of your COVID expenses and anything else that you, maybe you could project to spend this money on in White Pine County. We would recommend that you do have a plan put together with line items, dollar amounts that I agree to spend here, millions of dollars. And then final, final thing, I'm so sorry, Mr. Chair, but NACO is also going to give you a workshop on Tuesday, the 13th. Gosh, is that the 14th? I apologize. It's next Tuesday on compliance with these funds. So what that is, we're going to have an auditor to talk about tracking and auditing these funds to comply with the federal law and the Treasury rate. We are going to talk about the corruption of the rules for when you are contracting with others or spending the funds. And we're also going to talk about another allowed usage, sharing these funds with nonprofits for COVID impacts. And the best way to do that, including, you know, a template for a running schedule you want to have in place. So please join that call as well. We're trying to provide some information and support to counties on compliance spending these dollars. Thank you.
Anyone else, Elizabeth? Go ahead.
Yes, just one more thing, Dagny. Well, you're still on the line with us. I believe that when we look at this, we have no idea what that cost may be for our small businesses. But if I'm not mistaken in the reading I've done, jurisdictions can go ahead and just set a not-to-exceed amount of their COVID-19 CARES Act funding for this program and do it on a first-come, first-served basis in order to go ahead and budget for this.
Yeah, here's what I would recommend. Because it's sort of a moving target and we're trying to figure out their expenses, you could, you could sort of figure out everything you could spend these dollars on and what's left over, you could dedicate, you know, to businesses and then to sort of for COVID impact. Or what you could do is you could take a look at, say, this call on Wednesday when we're talking with the details of this, you know, we're thinking about, we're going to talk about what those grant amounts are. So, you know, Clark County decides the $10,000, the data limited fund because they have so much need for these funds down south for their actual impact in regional services. But then some counties have done up to $30,000. So, you know, you think about that threshold and then you think about how many businesses are in need and you do the math. And then what you could do is, you know, you don't have to set aside an exact amount. You can set aside a ballpark amount for this. And we could do, I think we're planning to do a first round of this hopefully as soon as we can if we get this up and going. And then if there's more need or more dollars, there, we would just say, then there would be the opportunity to open up a second round. You know, so you could sort of see how it went and judge the need as well as the dollars you have available going forward. But again, and I can give everyone know that these dollars do have to be extended out the door by December 30th.
Anyone else? Brian, can we make this a discussion item and put it on our agenda for the next regular scheduled meeting, which would be after the Wednesday conference? And I also agree, thanks, Dagny, because I think keeping it on a smaller scale with the people you've identified, Lori and Mike and Elizabeth, is the right way to go. I welcome anybody that wants to sit in on that meeting, but keeping it small and utilizing the people that are informed in that particular one is, the committee you set up is good. So you, did I make this?
Here's what I would do.
Go ahead.
If you may, go, go ahead.
I was going to say, I would prefer that we go ahead and, and close this and maybe table it to later on so that we can have this discussion of what's on the agenda items.
So I think that this, because we're just, it's just direction on utilization of funds, anybody from the public could have come in and said, I need $10,000 because I'm losing my business today. And that could have been part of the direction that we were given. I think that I would let Dagny go and then we can go on to the rest of it to see if there's any more direction we can pull out of this and actually get an action item on it.
And we'll do that during the, during the meeting?
Yeah, we can do it right now. I would just, I mean, I'm sure she's busy, so.
So.
Yeah, unless you have any other questions for her, yeah.
Let's do that.
So just leave the item open so we can actually get an action item for the direction that Elizabeth and whoever else is going to be taking.
That's why I didn't know we had to table it.
Okay.
Till later and come back to it. They're just closing for now or because we have a 10 o'clock.
I appreciate your call. What we're going to do, you listened to Brian right there. We're going to address this during the sequence of the meeting. And it's, we'll just leave it open. Is that okay with you?
This is Dagny. I'd be happy to stay on or call back in if you need me. The legislature might expect to hear and they're not doing much yet. So we're just sort of watching.
Okay, we have a 10 o'clock. We'll probably be addressing this item closer to 11:00, if you want to call back. Or we could call you. How, how can we do that?
I mean, is this something that we can kind of wrap up in the next five minutes? I mean, there's a, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm hearing that probably there's going to be direction to participate with NACO and the city on this program. And then perhaps we can address the other individual items on the sheet.
And this, this request that CARES Act funding, the list that we have is quite extensive. And probably needs to be narrowed down quite a bit and pick priorities. And based on this, you know, I don't know, you know, and then to come up with a fund amount of a not-to-exceed for the grant program.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, address this list that I handed out earlier today. What I've been doing is just compiling a list of all of the requests that I've received to use CARES Act funding for. I personally believe that there are some things we need to address sooner rather than later. And some of these things we can do at the end of the program so that we can spend down funds if we have additional funds left. So the first two items, the CARES Act does allow us to provide for funding with other local jurisdictions within our boundaries. And so the fire protection district would fall within that. You know, we've got an ambulance that we've been looking at. We now have a short-term into the local agreement. We support providing ambulance. We're looking at potentially replacing that ambulance. That money could be coming from CARES Act funding. Again, the showers at the MBEAL BFD that we've been discussing, that is for first responder decontamination after incidents that can be directly tied to COVID-19 mitigation efforts. We could go ahead and provide that funding through CARES Act. There are some other things that we definitely want to do. The cost of a loud sick leave. The federal government requires that we provide different types of leave related to COVID-19. These are reimbursable under CARES Act. So I put an estimate in for that until December 30th. I don't know what that final number is going to look like. Contact tracers. I've been working with Dr. Bian and what amount of money we think we need to go ahead and do contact tracing within our community when we do have cases that come out. And so there's a number in there for that. Public camp has asked for some equipment PPE and a thermometer specifically. And so they have, I have estimated their needs between now and December 30th for an additional $5,000 that can be funded. Maintenance items. Phil is still working with different departments to put in protective barriers and that type of thing. And so we put $5,000 in there for any additional items we need to be, we need to put in place to protect the public and staff during this event. Meal packaging for the senior center that has increased because of the congregate is now picking up their meals. Estimated at $1,025 per quarter. This facility rent for the senior center and the portable hand sink for the senior center, these are related to sanitation and mitigation efforts. IT with a request for laptops with licenses and accessories and a laptop charging cart. This is in case we do have something major come up this fall. We can have people work from home in order to maintain government service. Hand sanitizer stations. These are, we want to put these in every public area throughout all county buildings so people can come in and just get hand sanitizer. And then personal protective equipment. So those items I think are important that we look at. The other things that I think are very important we look at is the needs of the courts. They're going to start jury trials. Our jury room and our courtroom is not allowed for the space needed. The proposal from your district court judges is to go ahead and rent the convention center. This will create a need for rent of the convention center as well as additional security. So we would take off-duty sheriff's deputies to provide that security at the convention center. So that would be CARES Act fundable. We would probably need a, there's a jury mark upgrade on there. But I understand now that that will be covered at no additional cost by the software vendor. However, I do have portable jazz equipment and I had that in at $11,000. That may be a large underestimate. We may need to attack another Juron to that, up to $110,000. And that's for the recording systems at the convention center that will be needed for those jury trials. And then the, the small business assistance that we just discussed. I believe those are the really important ones. We have additional things such as sanitation and fodgers. We had a request from Turen Rec to get one of those. I think that is an important item to look at because they will be hosting the jury trials. And this is a way of disinfecting that facility on a regular basis. So that would be an important one. Then I have one of those for every building in the county, but that's something we can look at later and spend down funds at the end of this if we need to. And then we have a whole list of items that I designed here from Lilly Beery Hospital. I was asked at our last meeting to go ahead and reach out to the hospital. They do have their own funding coming in, but they said if we They do have their own funding coming in, but they said if we were, we needed to spend funding down. These are some items, and they're all listed at the bottom of your list. Obviously, clinic expansion renovation for $36 million. It's not something we're going to plan for now. But there are some other items on there that they can be looked at at the end in December, and they can get those items. It might be very worthwhile to just spend there.
I'm speaking out of a big room a little bit, Elizabeth. We have to have spent this money by December, is that?
December 30th, correct.